Welcome, everyone. Here we are. And it is time has come. Okay, Mr. Doherty, let's get rolling.
Mr. Mayor, today, the item on the agenda is for City Council to discuss the budget reconciliation documents. So staff has passed out copies of the City Council's reconciliation letter, as well as the copy of the staff reconciliation items that were provided as part of the council package for this week. So, Mr. Mayor, the floor is up to council. For council to have some time to discuss the budget reconciliation.
Okay. Councilmember Rouse is running behind, as is Mr. Blutcher. Okay? And Dr. Ross Hammond will be joining us shortly. Okay, let's open it up for discussion.
Well, does anybody want to take, does anybody need more time to read the letter? Or are they unable to read it all?
We just got it.
Okay.
Because we emailed it out earlier.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and, you know, take the time. Let's allow 20 minutes or longer if necessary. Let's just go ahead and, you know, do this, and maybe we can pipe in some nice music.
Do you want to, normally you will adjourn just on recess while everybody reads it.
Should we go ahead and do that?
It's tell your decision.
Okay.
In the past, that's what you've done.
All right. 20 minutes, 30 minutes? What's the thought?
15.
Let's go 20. Okay, let's go into a 20-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, I sent an earlier email to let you know that the letter was coming out. You'd have a chance to look at it earlier. And I stated that this letter has everybody's fingerprints on it. We tried really hard to listen to things that y'all each said and incorporate as much as we possibly could into this, something that we felt that everyone could agree upon. And a budget's an interesting thing, because when you're dealing with $2.8 billion, there is going to be things in it that you like and some things that you don't like. But we have to do our job, and we have to come together as a group to make sure that the city can move forward. And we owe that to our employees, to our citizens, to our schoolchildren. We owe it to everyone. So it's really important to be able to compromise and come together. I want to give a lot of great thanks to the staff. As always, they've been fantastic to work with. They really are. And if this budget was to have a theme, this is the year of public safety. We have, I've always said, if you're not safe, you don't have anything. And we did the market salary survey, which we said we were going to do last year, and we found out that we were short. And this budget, it's not perfect, but it really incorporates a lot of market salary survey to bring the salaries up to where they should be, with dedicating a half of a cent, half of a cent, to the meal tax, to be able to build a LITA, take care of our courts, and to do, a lot of people may not realize, and I guess this is kind of the public, that our costs for fire apparatus went from $2 million to $10 million, because things have gotten so expensive. A fire truck, I asked Mr. Doherty to help me with this. What is the cost of a fire truck and the time it takes now of what it used to be? What's the difference?
It depends on what type of truck, but some of our trucks that used to cost maybe half a million dollars are now in the million-dollar price range. Some are even more expensive than that. And typically, it used to take maybe 12 to 18 months to build out. Now we're seeing things like 36 to 48 months, and they're asking for all their money upfront before you can actually give them place to order.
They did that at the car dealership, Stacy. So I think that we've done a really good job. We've added the 30 new firefighters that we promised last year that we would do. So there's really a lot here for public safety. So, as we know, that with our retreat, we knew that CIP was going to be really, really tough. And I think there's a lot of places that are pretty much almost shutting down and not going forward because of the inflation and all that. So even though we had to cut some things out, we're still moving forward in a lot of areas, and I think every district is really doing pretty well considering the financial times. So with just that little preface, I'm going to read this very lengthy letter, and I apologize, but the public hasn't seen what you've seen, and so they need to hear this. Dear City Council members, The budget is arguably the most important process undertaken by the City Council, and is truly a year-round process. The budget outlines the collective priorities of the city and allows for implementation of policies that meet the needs of the public due to current realities. Realizing the budget this year more than ever has been a debate, excuse me, a delicate balance of preserving services while addressing emergency, emerging priorities, and sustainable planning for the future. On March 26, 2025, the City Manager and the Director of Budget and Management Services presented the proposed FY 2025-26 Resort Management Plan that was developed through months of planning and incorporating direction provided by the City Council. Since that time, the City Council has had five workshops to hear from each department head regarding operational needs. In addition to the workshops, we have held two public hearings and received feedback from the community. Now, sorry, I lost my place. Through Balancing Act, Speak Up VB via email and social media, using all of this information, we would have worked together to balance competing priorities combined below. Number one, many additional staffing requests were made by several departments in City Council for enhanced services delivery. But in recognizing the economic uncertainties of today, through the reconciliation process, we have worked to minimize ongoing costs to the city and have not added any additional positions beyond those included with the proposed budget. Number two, in response to community feedback, the proposed pleasure boat tax of $1.50 per $100 of assessed value will be removed from the FY 2025-26 budget. In lieu of the tax, a more affordable annual registration fee will be implemented, tiered based on size of the vessel. Attached to this document is a proposed ordinance outlining the fee. Revenue generated through this fee will be dedicated to the coastal CIP section to provide a sustainable funding source for future dredging needs. Number three, amend the proposed ordinance establishing the Major Projects Fund to more clearly dedicate the meals tax increase of 0.5% included within the FY 2025-26 operating budget for the purpose of public safety and judicial needs. Number four, to address aging infrastructure within Town Center, amend the scope of the Central Business District, South Tax, Inclement Financing District, Town Center TIF, to allow for capital maintenance and beautification efforts. Number five, direct the City Council Appointed Process Improvement Steering Committee to collaborate and coordinate with the City Manager's Office to review city department services to identify possible efficiency opportunities, cost-saving measures, and provide recommendations to the City Council for its review and consideration as part of the committee's fiscal year 2026 annual report. Number six, the proposed budget included funds for an economic feasibility study under Project 10700 ITA Athletic Village Presentation Area Plan. City staff is directed to await further direction from the City Council prior to beginning such a study or expanding those funds. Number seven, due to the funding limitations, full limitations of the findings from the market salary survey were not possible. The City Manager is directed to provide the City Council with a mid-year report on additional compensation options for those not receiving market salary-related adjustments that align with the economic reality of the times and do not result in becoming an ongoing cost to future operating budgets. Number eight, direction is provided for the City Manager to report on enterprise fund, which is stormwater, waste management, and public utilities, workplace facility, clean equipment, and personal protective equipment needs. This report should include an analysis of the funds available to absorb any additional investments in these areas in lieu of rate adjustments where possible. Number nine, amend the proposed changes to City Council related to observed holidays to show sworn fire department staff to maintain the previously 11 observed city holidays and three flexible holidays. A request is made to increase holiday pay for firefighters from 11.2 hours to 16 hours to better understand the budget impact associated with this request increase in holiday power pay. Direction is provided that staff review the impact of this over the next two years based on actual payroll numbers to better determine the annual impact. Number 10 is to increase the general fund compensation reserve by $51,000 to provide the deputy chiefs of the four public safety departments on additional 2% compensation increase for total pay increase of 5% to mitigate compression within the departments. Number 11 is to increase the year-one appropriations of projects 10399 strategic development projects by $150,000. This funding will be used for additional placemaking signage for the four remaining historically African-American communities within the city without signage. Number 12, increase the year-one appropriations of Project 10682 Woodstock Road Sidewalk by $350,000 for the design of the project. Number 13, establish Project 10702 Lookout Road Sidewalk and and program $325,000 in year one of the capital improvement program for preliminary design of a sidewalk on the north side of the Lookout Road from North Hampton Boulevard to Seaview Avenue. Number 14 is provide direction to city staff to explore the installation of a high-intensity activated crosswalk, which is called HAW, near First Court Road and Greenville Road to improve pedestrians safely around Bayside Recreation Center. Number 15, increase the year-one appropriation of project 10632 Park Infrastructure Placement with undeveloped park improvements of $150,000 for enhancements to the Salem Village Park located off of Moonstone Drive. Number 16 is amend the status of project 10317 Princess Anne Road Phase 7A from deleted to proposed. The balance to complete on this project is $17,321,700 as reflected on the requested but not funded listed within the capital improvement program document. Number 17, increase the year-one appropriation of project 10203 Heritage Building Maintenance to by $150,000 for the Lyth Haven cottage. Number 18, change the name of project 10651 Court Modernization to Critical Court Facility Study and ADA Accessibility to more accurately reflect the scope of the project and the extensive nature of the improvements that are being considered. Number 19, reduce the year-one appropriations of project 10667 Reloop Park Development by $10 million. This will bring the total budgeted cost of the project to $50 million. This reduction in appropriation will preserve bonding capacity in the tourism investment program for future needs. Number 20, increase the general fund budget of economic development by $250,000 to expand the facade improvements grant program specifically for businesses along the Galway campus. Items 21 through 28 are adjustments to departments' operating budgets for the following purposes. Number 21 is increase the Convention and Visitors Tourism Investment Program by $120,000, $75,000 for the Virginia Beach JC's charities, East Coast Surfing Championship ECSC, and $50,000 is for ongoing support for the Neptune Festival. Number 22, increase the Convention and Visitors Bureau general fund budget by $49,415 in one-time funds to provide support for the moving exhibition of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Number 23, increase the general fund budget of Parks and Recreation by $3,500 for the one-time purchase and installation of a bulletin board located in the Scarborough Square Park. Number 24, increase the general fund budget of Parks and Recreation by $20,000 for portable bathrooms at the Lyth Haven Marina to ensure sufficient facilities are available to meet public and public safety needs. Direction provided for city staff to develop reasonable estimates for considering more permanent facilities later. 25 is to increase the general fund balance of Parks and Recreation by $15,000 in one-time funding for Field Fest USA. Number 26, increase the general fund planning department's budget by $50,000 in one-time funds to provide funding for the VA 250 Commission. Number 27, increase the General Fund Department of Cultural Affairs budget by $100,000 for ongoing support for June 2 celebrations. Number 28, provide a $37,500 one-time increased contribution to the Virginia Symphony Orchestra within the Department of Cultural Affairs Arts and Culture dedication. Items 29 through 37 are related contributions to nonprofit partners. Number 29 is $25,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Parks and Recreation Foundation for ongoing fundraising efforts related to park and playground enhancements within Bay Colony. Number 30 is $90,000 to 200 to provide ongoing support to Hampton Roads Pride in support of their pride at the Beach Festival in the summer of 2026. Number 31, $21,200 in one-time funding to support tuition waivers for the Joe Smith Basketball Academy relatively to be held at the Virginia Beach Sports Center. Number 32 is $10,000 in one-time funding to support the Virginia Beach Mustangs Association. Number 33 is $50,000 in one-time funding for Sunrise Christian Music Festival. Number 34 is $41,400 in one-time funding for Great Neck Athletic Association to support their citywide youth tackle football program. Number 35, $25,000 in ongoing funding to support the Urban League's Martin Luther King's Day Celebration. Number 36, $30,000 in ongoing support for the Men of Faith Basketball Camp to be held at Virginia Beach Sports Center. Number 37 is to decrease non-departmental regional grants by $29,400 of this amount, $9,800 were reduced from the Virginia's for High Speed Rail and $19,600 from the American Red Cross. Number 38, direct the community organizations' grant, COG, to review the existing non-MOU-driven regional grant recipients. This review will ensure all grant funds are being used properly and meeting the current needs of the community. A thorough review of regional grant awards is needed and will be conducted at a minimum of every five years by the COG committee. COG may provide recommendations on future funding allocations during this review for the City Council's consideration as a part of the FY 2026-27 budget process. Number 39, direct staff to review dedications within special development, special revenue funds for a minimum of every three years and report out to City Council on capacity, overall health, and if the fund is sufficient to meet dedication obligations. This letter, combined with the City Manager's staff requested reconciliation letter, which was provided to City Council previously, are reflected in the attachments, which will include details about the funding sources and appropriation adjustment to balance debt by FY 2025-26 operating budget and capital improvement program. As always, we want to thank the members of the community who participated in public hearings and laid in on social media or other platforms to offer your comments on the FY 25-26 operating budget and the CIP in addition to the staff members who made every effort to respond to our requests for information. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact us directly. And this is signed by Bobby and myself. And so the staff still has a lot of work to do because they have to do all these budget changes. And I believe Amanda has to get to about 5:00 noon on Thursday. So the staff has to take all of this and make all the changes and has to be ready by noon on Thursday. So just to kind of let you know how long that works.
Okay, let's open up for questions and comments. Barbara?
Well, I think it's a very good way of addressing so many of the things that we have talked about and that obviously have been coming in that we haven't talked about but needed to be considered. I just have three points that I would like to mention a little further. On item six, this proposed budget including funds for an economic feasibility study for the ITA Athletic Village Preservation Area. And city staff is directed to await further direction from the City Council prior to beginning such a study. Actually, this economic feasibility study was a fourth bullet under the Short Term Low Cost Plan implementation that we looked at from the ITA Master Plan Update that I asked for in last year's reconciliation budget. And we got, as we had asked, October 1st. But of the other bullets, plant trees on fringes of Athletic Village West where they will not conflict with future development, including disc golf and possibly construct a course, design and construct 5K practice course at PAC, and activate and maintain additional ad hoc temporary cross-country trails at Athletic Village East. When we looked at this, and I believe we looked at it November 12th, I've looked at the minutes, I think City Council kind of gave a nod to saying, let's go forward with these short-term issues. I think we called them the low-hanging fruit. But as far as the first one, planting the trees on the fringes of the Athletic Village West where they wouldn't conflict, is extremely important that we move forward on. And this isn't going to cost the city any additional money than what we've already got sitting in a bank account of over $1 million for tree mitigation, most of which came from the Virginia Dominion Energy mitigation for the Seaval project. So we have the funds for tree mitigation. And this is a very important step there in that area to delineate where we're going to do things. And so this $200,000, I hope, will not only be used to look at the economic study, which I think we can do a lot in-house, but would also help us to design and construct this and adopt it as what we want. We have the plan, and I think it's important that all four of these bullets be included. And I just certainly would not be supportive of spending $200,000 on just another study, wasting another year. I feel strongly that Virginia Beach is the place that should be the capital of amateur sports on the East Coast. And I think some other cities were looking at becoming the same thing. And we don't want to waste another year. That's the place for Virginia Beach. We are the sports capital, if there's any place that should be the sports capital. And if we look at what's going on over there already with the sportsplex and the ball fields and so forth, it just needs to be finished. And we need to, it's all planned out, it's all there, the city owns the property. And I want to see it move forward. I don't want to see it languish another year. So that's what I think about that. The second thing I noticed is that there's no mention in here of the libraries. And we did hear a lot about the concern from our citizens about the libraries. And I think it's extremely important that we make sure that none of the positions that are cut are directly impacting citizen services. And I believe these positions, if what we got in our answers is correct, we're going to be cutting four of the positions that are essentially the second in line at the libraries. And number one, I would hope in reviewing it, the budget, we find that we don't have to make any cuts in the library staff. But if we are going to make any cuts in the library staff, we need to make absolutely certain that those are cuts that are not directly affecting the public. I think there's some idea from what we've heard that these don't, but there's a disagreement about that. And I would want to have more information. I think one of our answers to questions that we sent in addressed this. And we really need to look at the libraries and make sure we're not doing anything to adversely impact the libraries going forward. We certainly heard from our citizens on that one. And the other one, the meal tax. I think increasing the meal tax kind of came as a surprise. And the more I think about it, the more I have some concern. I certainly don't think that our top priority should be assigned the last dollars. Our top priority in this budget is clearly public safety. They get the first dollars, they don't get the last dollars. And if there's, I mean, I'm not sure why we want to dedicate meal tax money to public safety except to make it more acceptable to the people and say, well, you're getting public safety if you pay this additional meal tax. I would really like to see us slow down a little bit on this, maybe look at it for another six months. If we adopt this meal tax increase now, it's going to go up in effect July 1, right in the middle of the tourist season. And think about what we're doing to these small businesses, these restaurants. They're the people who have to collect this tax for us, and it's not going to be a popular move. And I really think it's putting an awful burden on these businesses in the middle of the tourist season to be the ones to have to break the news to the public that they've got to pay another half a cent on this meal tax, which is certainly not very popular to begin with. So my suggestion would be, and the other point, as far as this goes, and there are many, the more I think about it, the worse it gets. But what's going on nationally right now, we can't ignore. And whatever is going to happen to the economy, nobody knows. And I think it's not the right time for us to do this and impact these small businesses. I think a six-month delay would give us a chance to see what happens nationally. And maybe there might be some other solution we can come up with. I know that one of our speakers had suggested looking at short-term rentals, and we did. And unfortunately, I think the short-term rental has to be taxed at the same as the hotel rate. So that might not be an option. But there may be other options that are out there rather than increasing this very unpopular tax. So I've got a lot of concern about doing this. And I hope maybe we can think about it a little bit harder.
Okay, anyone else at this point, Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Things that I'm about to say are not intended to point fingers or cast dispersions on anyone. It's just stating of how I feel about the budget and budget process. I think it's a Herculean task for staff to put together a budget of this size. And I think overall, they've done a good job. And some of what I'm feeling and some of what I'm expressing comes through my own ignorance of the process. I've learned a lot in my four months of being on council. When I first got here, I was under the impression that I would wait for the budget to come out. I'd go through it with a fine-tooth comb and come out with many, many suggestions about how to make it better and how to reduce costs. And what I found out is the budget process starts back in September, October, November. And the majority of that work, the majority of that ground is plowed during that period of time. By the time the City Manager's budget is presented to council, the hard work, the heavy lifting is already done. We can spread some of the icing around, but that cake is cooked. So, you know, I'm disappointed that more empathy has not been shown for our taxpayers, that people are feeling a financial burden. And, you know, I had a commitment to try to do something about that. But having now realized what the process is, at least I am happy that, you know, council has agreed to put into the letter that, you know, the Process Improvement Committee, which Councilman Schulman and myself are liaisons on, will work with the City Manager's Office during those critical months of September, October, November to find ways to reduce costs and to hopefully bring some tax relief to our citizens. I think, you know, past councils put something of a burden on this year's council in that we were tasked with providing 30 more firefighter positions, which I'm not saying we didn't need, I'm just saying that we started 30 positions in the hole from day one. We were faced with a lot of deferred maintenance on some of our major assets, on whether it was the aquarium or the convention center or the courthouse. That was kicked down to this year's council to address. We did a salary survey, which greatly increased some of our compensation to our employees, which is justifiably needed. But instead of doing it on a yearly basis, we deferred it until, for three years. And then boom, we get hit with it this year. So there was a lot that came upon us, along with, you know, past councils had promised to cap the stormwater fees out into, I guess it was 2028. Well, you know, stormwater fees, we're supposed to pay as we go. And to commit this, you know, this year's council to not having a fee increase when the prices of providing that service go up year after year, again, put another big burden on this year's council. So, you know, I would ask that in the future that we really seriously consider or restrain from making promises in the future that we don't know if we can keep. And we don't know what the price of goods are going to be, we don't know what the economy is going to be. So let's not promise things that for next year or the year after that we don't know that we're going to be able to keep. that we're going to be able to keep. And, you know, we're facing, the economy's facing tremendous headwinds. We're looking at a recession, these proposed tariffs, the interest rates, the rising cost of housing. We're looking, you know, tourism, we've already had been warned about the, many, many foreigners are looking at vacationing elsewhere. That's going to have a direct impact on our beachfront, on our tourism industry. And so, you know, we need to be able to anticipate having less revenues because of these items. And again, I'm happy that through the Process Improvement Committee, we'll be able to make some recommendations, hopefully, that we can look at for next year. But also, I would like to say, you know, although I'm against the meal tax, like Ms. Henley said, I think it's the wrong time, but if we are going to implement it, which it looks like we are, I would ask us to at least consider that during Restaurant Week, that we do an abatement of that tax for that one week as a show of good faith to the restaurant community and to their patrons. I'd also, like Ms. Henley said, I really think that our future lies in action sports, being the capital of action sports for the East Coast, for at least east of the Mississippi, if not the entire nation. We have a lot of opportunities here. We have, we have the opportunity to use the land, some of the land at least, in the ITA to build these ball fields, to build cross-country tracks, to expand on our soccer fields, that we can use some of the land down by the convention center to build other facilities that will attract sports year-round and bring us to a whole other level, if not the premier level, when it comes to action sports. I do think that we need to monetize the parking at the convention center and the sports center that, to provide thousands of spaces free of charge when people would willingly pay to park. You can go down there any weekend when they're having a big event, and you'll see a number of cars just circling, waiting for someone to leave for the opportunity to go have a place to park. And given that, I also think we need to prioritize, in our CIP, we need to prioritize a parking lot at the convention center to facilitate the parking needs there, but it would also address the parking needs for the Vibe District, for Atlantic Park, the Dome, and for the Oceanfront. To start on it now and make it a five- or six-, seven-year project is just wasting time and effort, because every study we have, that Central Beach District study we have, shows the need for parking in that area. And in order for that area to grow and to be developed, we need the parking now. We don't need it once that area is developed. We can't develop that area, we can't even begin to develop that area without the additional parking. And I think the traffic that the Atlantic Park and the Dome and the Vibe District continue to bring to them is going to upset the neighbors in that community, is going to upset the people that are coming trying to use those venues. And parking garage is essential. I also think that we need to really give some serious consideration to repurposing our convention center. That we don't need a study, we've had a 20-year study, convention center is not the highest and best use. If we can repurpose that and make it an action sports facility, along with keeping the ballroom, and it could be a civic center, arena center for sports and for the events that we currently have there, and fully utilize that convention center to make us what we should be as a community. So, those are my thoughts, and I, having said that, I know that we had a lot of challenges this year with the budget, and I'm supportive of most of what we're doing. And I look forward to next year having a harder look at cutting our spending and finding ways to reduce our revenue needs.
Okay, Kev?
I'm thankful that, you know, I get to participate in my first budget and piggybacking off of Councilman Cummings. You know, there's a lot that we come on to council that is new for us. But I'll tell you, we are very pro-people, right? And so you look at the budget and you try to find ways that you can understand it with your experience so that you can provide a better quality of life for Virginia Beach and for residents. One of the things that, if I can direct our attention to, is number 38. This is where I'm able to get a handle on all the regional grants that we're doing, and so we can understand where the money flow is going. And so I'm so grateful for the COG Review Board, because not only do we have a mechanism in place where we get to actually understand where regional grants are being dispersed, because there's a check and balance. And so as a new council member, I'm able to, with the help of other council members, we're able to understand where the different regional grants are at. And so what better place to have where we have a check and balance in place, and that's the COG Review Board. And so this is a very tight budget, lots of ask, and now we have a review process that in order for grants to be approved, there's a process. So that we can free up money where money is needed, but we can also tighten our belts. And so it's not just us that's reviewing this process, it's, we've got a great mechanism in place, and that's the COG Review Board. So I can tell you that this board, I can tell you for myself, that we are very proactive when it comes to looking at how we can save you money. And so if you think of the COG Review Board, that's how we save the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Anybody else at this point? Amelia?
I'm thankful you for working on this. It's not easy to watch things go back and forth. And of course, there's been lots of asks. In fact, just last week, we got a few more asked in. One of the things I would like to turn to is number 26. I know we only have $50,000 for that. I know they were asking for $75,000. We are the largest city, and they have been preparing to have events that's going to come up. They did not quite understand that the last time when they did get $60, they needed to use that then. They thought we can use it ongoing, not understanding what you don't use, you'll lose. So now it's gone less, and I know they need at least that amount for several things that they are going to be doing. So that's one I would like to at least see where we can borrow from Peter to pay a little bit more to increase that. I'm pleased to see that we do have the VBJC's and the Neptune Festival, they do a lot, and giving them that opportunity to have some money in place. The other area I wanted to mention was, let me see if I can find it. All right, oh, the others that Councilwoman Henley brought up. If we have the money for those sports in the area, we need to move forward with that, because other cities are already looking at what we're doing. And if it takes a while, and I've sat, I've walked along that, I've met with Chuck and so forth, and if we have the money in place to move that for the sports, you know, let's not do yet another study, it's been done before. So that's another that I'm interested in, about the libraries. I know that's a tough one, but this is the first time I've seen so many librarians and people come out, even their husbands are coming out. And when you have that low morale for the libraries, which lots of kids enjoy, I have a little eight-year-old granddaughter, if we say, where you want to go, Chuck E. Cheese or library, it's library, because it's the reading opportunity. So, you know, let's look at and see how we can get those morals up, because we've seen it over and over that they are pretty down about what's happening with them. And the last one I had, libraries, mentioned about the trees mitigation. I'm thankful for four, because it is important for the central business district. And that's it. Otherwise, I would like to say thanks for the work, because it took a lot of work to do that. And what you mentioned, Councilmember Cummings, about the meal tax having a break, is nothing to help that situation during Restaurant Week. Thank you.
Okay, War.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I also want to chime in and echo what everyone's saying. Thanks to the staff and to Vice Mayor Wilson for playing quarterback on this. And it's not a pretty process at all. My district, we pay a lot of real estate taxes, a lot of restaurants in my district, and a lot of boat owners in my district. And while we are reflecting and work for the best interest of the city, especially in my district, I'm very sensitive. And so the boat tax, especially the meals tax, hit a lot of people by surprise. And while it's not a big increase, it's an increase, not a decrease. So I'm very sensitive to that, and we could have a break for a week, although that doesn't do but so much, or, you know, we've got to make ends meet. And we do have the bond referendum, which was $567 million, now a billion dollars. It's incredible that our staff is able to allow us to move forward with all the projects to do that, it's over a billion dollars. That's 4.1 cents on 567, it's probably almost double that on our tax rate, and we're keeping it the same. But seeing this reconciliation letter, seeing the budget as proposed, I can certainly point to a lot of things in it, just like we do around the kitchen table, point to things in our respective families and businesses. And I do, would like, and I spoke with Councilman Cummings, to find a way to see if we can find some fat to cut and ways to cut spending as well as, and not looking at increasing taxes. So, you know, it's, you can hear me saying that I don't like it, but I'll vote for it, which I will. But, and I also want to chime in on the ITA. There's no question that we should, as a city, look at sports, not only at the resort, but also in the ITA area. And we have the Victus Report studies, we do have studies. I'm not ready yet to add anything, but I do think we ought to be moving forward in some form or fashion with an ITA, with moving that ball forward, if you will, and no pun intended, because I do, we should strive to become more of a sports destination, and it's also great for our population, for our citizens. That's, the convention center, it should be an ongoing conversation on how we use that to the best interest. And I'm really glad that we funded the Central Beach study, land study, because parking has risen to the top, and we'll be hearing soon on some proposals for that. So, one last thing we did cut, thanks Vice Mayor Wilson, $10 million from Rudy Loop. And then we also put on pause to reimagine Atlantic Avenue. So that $48 million may be cut back to $25 or $35 million or more, we'll see. So we are taking some steps to cut back on some of the resort projects to the benefit, potentially, of some other projects.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for all the work, or Vice Mayor for kind of shepherding the reconciliation process and being communicative and open to suggestions and all of that. I wanted to, just a couple of highlights that I wanted to note in here in the reconciliation letter. My specific requests were pedestrian safety-related, and that is something that I care deeply about. So I was pleased and thank you for, you know, having it in the reconciliation letter for a sidewalk where there isn't one in a busy beach neighborhood in Chicks Beach. And then I think the hawk signals are great, so I, it wasn't an ask for dollars, it was really just a, when we look at them next. Put this on the list, because the folks along First Court and Greenwell, they've been asking for a traffic signal for a long time, but it's just the numbers aren't there, and it's just not busy enough to warn it. So that'll be a very nice safety benefit, especially considering the park is there as well. I'm very happy that we were able to support ECSC, Neptune Festival, and the other nonprofit asks that are listed in here, Phil Fest in particular. I know that we have a very vibrant Filipino community, and that's a wonderful festival. You know, I wanted to chime in, I guess, on the restaurant fee, or, I'm sorry, on the restaurant fee, the restaurant tax at half a percent. I understand the concerns from the restaurant community, I do, and I understand that food prices are obviously, you know, not as low as they've been in the past. So it may look or feel like we're making it more expensive for folks, you know, to find food. The businesses don't pay this tax. And I know it's kind of indirectly, I guess, I suppose, passed to consumers in some way, but, but, I mean, it's, if you look at half a percent on a $50 bill, it's 25 cents. And I'm not going to minimize 25 cents when you're going to sign a check, but what this tax is doing, what this tax increase is doing is really, really important, and it's doing it in concert with other revenue streams as well. So, I've heard some people say that the restaurant community is being singled out. I don't feel that's the case, because the Ag Reserve program, the Open Space program, and the Town Center, I'm sorry, yeah, it is a Town Center, TIF, is they're all coming in together to make this major projects fund, because we've, we've all been talking about it for a long time. We've been suffering from these, you know, increasing costs of projects that are running away from us with inflation. And if we can just get these done a little closer to when they're budgeted and designed instead of just throwing money, chasing inflation year after year. So, and obviously, the LITA and public safety are incredibly deserving the investment, the priority that we're putting there. I'm really glad that we came to compromise on the boat registration fee. I think that's a much more reasonable approach, and it still goes to pay to maintain the resource that are being utilized by the people that are paying the registration fee. And then finally, I just want to chime in because, and join Councilwoman Ross Hammond in expressing my gratitude and, you know, just happiness about the Town Center TIF, the amendment to that ordinance. And I wanted to just explain it so that the public understands what that actually is. The TIF is designed to finance new infrastructure. That was the way the ordinance was originally crafted. The Special Service District tax, the SSD, is meant to fund regular maintenance. And Town Center and the district are 20-plus years old, and they're aging. So the assets, in addition to the regular maintenance, there's capital maintenance. So like elevators and section of garages that have concrete and steel and rebar and things that are rusting, other things. So the capital maintenance here, we're amending the TIF so that we can take care of some of those larger capital items, so that we don't choke that SSD by these capital items, and then the SSD can focus on the routine maintenance as it was designed. So that's what that is, and I wanted to take a minute to explain it. And thank you again for the work on this.
Anyone else at this point?
I do have one last thing that I want to say thank you, that is for those signs. Remember three years ago where you gave, each of us had $150,000? Remember three years ago where you gave, each of us had $150,000 to do what we needed in our district. And I took that to start saying that a lot of the historic African-American neighborhoods didn't have a sign or something that would point out where they are. And from that three, oh, four that we did, the first group, council and everyone, including you all, continue to include so that we'll be able to finish everything. So we're now in their second year, and the last one, got it in here. And that is important for taking that step to complete something for the African-American community. So thank you all so much.
Rosemary.
Patrick, help me with this, but we're working on a tree plan now, isn't that right?
Vice Mayor, yes. Staff presented, I think maybe last year sometime, a plan to spend some of that Dominion money and to spread it amongst areas that need trees and the various districts of the city. To include, I think, pretty much all districts, there was a plan to incorporate some trees in there as well. We can have staff put together a report that we can give the council to kind of refresh the plan that it's being used for that right now.
And about the $200,000 in the ITA study, we intentionally said, let's put this on pause until the council can come and decide exactly how you want to go there. Really isn't enough time in the budget process to sort of figure that out. At least that was our feeling. So that we can, I had talked to Ms. Henley. She didn't want it out of the budget, but she just didn't want it for a study. So we've got it there. And so when the council can come back together and talk about how to spend that. But there's really not enough time between now and Thursday at noon for the council to figure that out, in my opinion. So just wanted to kind of mention that. And as far as, I support doing duty-free or tax-free week for Restaurant Week. As I told Stacy, we did that during COVID. Do you remember in COVID when the restaurants were really struggling? And I think we did it for a couple of months. So we did that to help the restaurants out. So I think, but I don't know that it has to be in this letter. We can just say we can come back and make that. Because we did it before on the fly. Patrick, is that?
I recall, I remember when I got here in COVID, that was one of the things that the council did. Let me get, give me, I'm making a note, and then I'll get with the city attorney's office and the budget office. And then we'll figure out, we'll give you guys a report on how that could be done, and any obstacles or challenges to doing that. And then that could give us time to come back and brief City Council on options for consideration to do like a standalone ordinance that maybe say for that particular week, council could provide, not implement the additional increase in the meals tax.
A tax-free week.
Barbara.
On that $200,000 in the ITA so forth, do we not have to allocate the funds from what we already have within the tree mitigation? Or can you just, did I just hear you say some of it's been spent somewhere else? I thought we had to allocate it.
The council did appropriate the funds. And then I think at the time when we got the funds, several months afterwards, I think planning Parks and Rec gave a presentation on how they would spend those funds in various different districts. And I think that plan's being implemented right now. So I'll have the staff submit a report to kind of update council on where we're at with that.
Well, you know, if they're mitigating, that means they should be done in the place where the trees were taken down to begin with, not just anywhere. So I think that's the important thing, that we make sure we're actually mitigating the trees that were removed that produced this fund. And so that's why particularly the ITA fits, because a lot of that Dominion money came through the Seaval project and came through that area and took down the trees. So I just didn't know if we had to allocate it, but I would certainly like to make sure that we're doing these other short-term, low-cost issues. And that's
And we're not doing, so Councilmember Henley, we're not doing those other three items. Like, so not specifically for the ITA stuff, right? So the last direction that staff got from council is council asked us to come back with a plan to reconcile options, to show council how you can reconcile having the sports and the active recreation facilities, and also possible opportunities for expanding the innovation park. So that's what staff's working on now.
Well, I looked in the minutes from, I think it was November 12th when we looked at this. And so I pretty well have followed that as what, you know, that's why I think we really need to know what staff direction is in writing so we all understand it. Because I certainly didn't have that impression.
So Councilmember Henley, this briefing, I think, happened in early winter 2025. So is that in January, February? Several councilmembers asked for us to brief on the status of the innovation park. And the direction that we got from council at that time was to come back with a reconciled plan on how all those different uses can coexist. So that's what staff is working on.
Well, we could talk about it because I just hate to see this area continue to drop out and drop back and not go anywhere and just be wasted. On the last issue, the last item, number 39, directing staff to review dedications within special revenue funds at a minimum of every three years. I think that grew out of my request to make certain that we track the open space and the TIF and the ARP to make certain we didn't cut too much from those projects. And if we have impacted their mission, we need to reconsider. We need to be willing to reconsider what we did. And I appreciate, I know one of the questions I asked last week was if staff would update the listing of project programs that have been, projects that have been developed with the open space. And you had that in your agenda package. It's quite a list. But when you look at these projects, the benefits that these open space projects or properties provide to the city are just enormous. So it's not just a feel-good thing. It's, are they achieving the benefits that they can? So I think it's important that we make sure we haven't done damage to some real good programs in order to carry this out. And so I hope we won't wait three years, but we'll be constantly monitoring these things to make sure we are still achieving what those programs were supposed to achieve.
I can say something real quick. That directly came from your, what you had to say. So, so I said, everybody's had fingerprints on this thing. And I also want to say, District Five was also greatly impacted by Seaval. I mean, it came through. And I'm, Frank, I just talked to somebody this morning about his yard, a fellow citizen's yard. So District Five really got whacked.
I think it was District Five and District Two that the Seaval impacted. So we want to split it.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. Staff, they just let me know, not all the tree mitigation funds have been appropriated. Some of it has been, but not all of it's appropriated. Some of it's still in fund balance.
Well, maybe you can give us a report on just what has been appropriated and how and where, and based on what direction.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. You know, let's close this out. And let me just start by saying, budget time in every municipality is a context point. It's not easy. We are having the same challenges every municipality is going to have in this great nation. We are an aging city. And we have a lot of responsibilities ahead. And we will confront them. We have that. But the other thing is, you know, my concern is that we move forward, that we realize that it takes, any budget that we do, you know, there's going to be things that we're not going to like in it. I've been doing this for 21 years now, and every budget is the same. Some people are going to like some things, some folks are not going to like some things. But the question I ask is it for the general good, and perhaps, perhaps some of the things that we may object to are actually necessary, and that we have to have the political courage to do. You know, I really think, and I agree, that action sports in the ITA is good. But I also, there was a clear direction given, you know, can we find a compromise? Because the reality is, we're running out of land, and we got to create those revenue sources to, you know, pay some of the bills that, you know, Worth was talking about. You know, we can improve the library system, but also, like even with the meals tax, you know, this is a tough one. I agree with that 100%. But we have a priority where we need a training facility for our police. And, you know, with due respect, I don't think we have, you know, the, how shall I put it? We should not wait six months. I mean, if this is going to be a priority, we got to move on it. And I agree with you, Stacy, if we're going to make a garage a priority, you know, once we get through the budget and everything, you know, let's get that on the radar. And, but with that being said, you know, my recommendation is that we accept what we all have contributed to and move it forward. Does anybody object?
Can we get Patrick to make a comment about the libraries?
Okay.
Would you mind?
What comment?
Talk about the libraries.
So what's being proposed right now are five supervisory positions. From our understanding and from the job descriptions, these aren't frontline positions. These are supervisory positions. And the idea behind this is that with technology, things have changed. So we don't necessarily need as many branch service coordinators as we previously had before. The goal will be to consolidate the branch coordinators and provide central services for some of the work that they do across the district. It may look a little different in each different branch, but that's the goal behind the program. They're not frontline positions. They're supervisory positions.
Are they going to affect any programming?
We don't foresee them impacting any programming. These aren't programmatic positions. They're back office, frontline, they're back office support supervisory positions.
Barbara.
I just opened my packet and found that this is in my packet. I think you all maybe got this by email because they didn't want to make 1,100 pages of this. But these are the letters that we have gotten of support for the master plan update of the ITA. That's quite a list of individuals and organizations that have written their letters of support. So I hope you'll look at your emails to see that. But this is, I'll be glad to share it with anybody. And anybody would like a hard copy, we'll make it. But we have, the reason I asked last year in the budget to have the report brought to us by October 1st was to allow us to do it in the budget this year, but also allow plenty of time for public scrutiny. And this is a result of the public scrutiny that has gotten from that plan. And I think we can see it's very, very supported by the public.
Okay, Stacy.
When I said before that the heavy lifting on the budget was done September, October, November, December, I did not mean to indicate that public input was not taken into consideration. The public input that we had this year on the budget, there was heavy, heavy resistance to the boat tax that was considered by the council. And that was, those considerations were taken into account. There was a lot of public input about the librarians. And as you can hear from the discussion around the table, that that became an issue that wasn't on the radar before. So I don't want to discourage future public input. I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that it doesn't matter if we come or not, because it does. The more public input, the more organized and the more well-thought-out these issues are brought forward to council, the better they're considered. And I strongly encourage people in the future to get even more involved in the public input process, because it does matter.
And, you know, Stacy, let me just say, I'm delighted you and Jager, you know, we're going to take the process improvement thing. When it was designed years ago, this was what exactly it was for. And that, once again, as we go and look at things, and as we go and look for redundancies and changes and, you know, that type of thing, you know, the challenges we're going to have are pretty broad. You know, we have a national debt of $37 trillion with a tremendous debt service on it. And that is money not coming to goods and services to the cities. It's not repairing bridges and other infrastructure. So guess what? We get to do the heavy living. And as we brought out before, on our 97 cent mill rate, 30 cents of that are unfunded and underfunded mandates, you know, from the state and the feds. And, you know, once again, you know, we got X amount of, you know, fungible funds to play with here. But once again, operational efficiency would be the good thing. And the other thing, Stacy, it's going to bring it, it'll be flush out, and the public will understand what we're doing and why. And it will be on an ongoing yearly basis. So I think it's going to be a good thing. Okay, once again, does anybody object? Us both. Okay, let's go ahead. All right. Okay, at this point, council liaison reports. Worth, I think you and somebody else had a little grand opening last Friday.
I'd like to invite everyone to speak about this. I'm assuming the Virginia Beach Dome at Atlantic Park. Thank you for letting me speak to that. And again, I invite everyone who went on stage Friday night. So I want to congratulate everybody who sat at this table before me and a lot of us, prior, and prior city managers and mayors, council members and staff. Our staff has worked incredible hours to get, this is just the first part of Atlantic Park. We have a surf park that's going to open up in July. But I also want to give a lot of credit to the team that responded to our RFP about eight years ago, Venture Waves LLC. It's also Venture Realty, along with their team, they have Jordan, the contractor, and Hanbury Architects, and Cooper Carey Architects, and others. So all the contractors have spent a tremendous amount of time and a lot of effort to date. The investors have spent over $60 million of their own cash. And then they're also on the hook for recourse for financing for over $200 million. This is truly an effort, Herculean effort on behalf of many. Right so far, I mean, the dome is open, the parking is good. So far, I've not heard of anyone complaining about parking or traffic or noise or any disruption in that area, which is part of my district. So two concerts have happened. And again, this is just one phase of Atlantic Park. So I'd like anyone else to comment on it. And by the way, our operator for the dome, I'm sorry, Live Nation, who is our partner at the amphitheater, we've got a professional team here.
Great. Josh? I will say ditto to all the people you just thanked. Because, and also to our staff who worked tremendously hard alongside our project partners, making sure that the venue was delivered in a beautiful, I think, fashion. I mean, if you've been inside it, I mean, we all have, it is awesome. It looks so, so nice in there. And it, we heard the Live Nation folks say it's the nicest facility that they, that they have, that they operate in, in the country, period, which I think is pretty amazing. And the development isn't even all done yet and all built out. So I think the rest of it will just add to what a wonderful, new and exciting amenity that is for us. And I can't wait to see the rest of it come up. And, you know, I was, and I think it's incredible that we built, that we were able to build a 3,500 to 5,000 indoor/outdoor entertainment venues for just a little bit more than what we paid for the Sandler Center in 2014. So, and that's a 1,300-seat, I think, 1,300 or 1,500-seat venue. So I think that's remarkable.
You know, I tell you, there was a tremendous amount of kudos that go into this. You know, this is coming to an end of a long seven-year journey. There were some bumps along the way. But there are certain people that, and you know, I really think deserve a lot of credit. Mark, your legal team and everything, has been challenges there, but you've handled it with dignity and professionalism. And you were a steady hand on the tiller, you know, going forward. This was by far the largest, most complex, largest magnitude project in the history of Virginia Beach. And here we are. And, you know, we're showing people. And when people see us getting this through, then the Amazons start coming and everybody else, because we can do it. Everybody knows we got the professional capacity. But, you know, I'd like to single out one true here, Amanda Jared, who was boots on the And I'll tell you what, put her, you know, heart and soul and tremendous amount of dedication into this. And, you know, dealing with multiple players in this, when you think about, what is it, 15 partners on this? And when you think about all the crew there, 15 partners on this? And when you think about all the crews and everything, and, you know, and, you know, some of the barriers to success that popped up and everything, you know something? We got it open, okay? And the operative word is "we," and kudos to everybody. You know, the electricity in that building on Friday night was, you know, contagious. And I'll tell you what, it's going to be the first of many things. It's going to be not only a destination for, you know, tourists and people from all over, this is the people's building. And I think, you know, we're, we're going to be a fun place. Our best days at the oceanfront and in Virginia Beach are coming. Anybody else liaison?
I wanted to share also what was important there, to see so many young people have jobs.
Oh, yeah.
They had so many employed and were very cordial. And I thought that was important. It was just a magic that day. So congratulations for your district. I know Amanda, I don't know, I didn't see her wear sketches, but she was still running around, getting everything done, which was wonderful.
We'll buy her a pair.
We'll have to buy, we'll have to buy you a pair. Okay, are we still on liaison?
Okay, how about council discussion?
Well, discussions, a couple of good things happened. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools had their Community Partnership Engagement Program. And I think it was Oak Tree School got one of the special awards for that. And it had a very nice turnout. They had it over at Landstown. On the second, on Sunday, the Virginia Beach Alumni Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated had a nice event of scholarship and awards. And your humble servant was awarded the Doherty Heights Award for Political Awareness and Community Involvement. If you all know about Doherty Heights, a very big civil rights, and especially for women. So I was really pleased to accept that on behalf of them.
Oh, thank you. That was good.
And I haven't gotten to read this. Someone did. Did you do that? Did you read it? I haven't got to read it, but
I read it.
Yeah, in the Virginia Country Magazine for Women History Month. I was also featured in that. I have to go back and read from an interview. So if all of you got one of those.
I just wanted to.
I just wanted to. So it was great. And then the last thing was that a special grant that Commonwealth of Virginia, General Assembly, including the governor, that as I watched all those cuts and whatnot that happened, it was so nice around 10:45 PM to hear from Brent McKenzie saying, Dr. Ross Hammond, we were getting a little nervous, but for the Virginia African-American Culture Center, they kept in $1 million seed money to begin that construction. So I'm just over the moon. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Worth?
Thank you, Mayor Dar. I was out last week. I know there was some discussion here and at the Resort Advisory Commission about College Beach Weekend. And I just want to be on record publicly, I've heard from a lot of stakeholders and a lot of citizens, very concerned citizens. I've had conversations with many of you and the city manager about next year and steps forward on how, and kudos to our police department, very capable police department that we all support. But we've got to really do something about what's happening. What, all those arrests and everything associated with it is bothersome to me and the many. And so I just want to go on record, and we'll continue to work on it.
Okay, Jennifer, then Rosemary.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Cash.
For active transportation. So it's May, so it's Bike Month for those of you who celebrate. And if you don't, get into it. So a couple of things going on. So there's a trail cleanup. I'm going to look, just make sure I'm reading this right. Give me a nod if not. So this Saturday, May 10th, from 9 to 12 at London Bridge Bike Path. So student, our student ATAC member organized a cleanup with Lynn Haven River Now. So actually, we're just looking at another student who's interested in getting involved with our committees and our commissions. So some of our best ideas have been coming from the high school members. So that's another plug. If you are watching and you have a high schooler that you know, or if you yourself are a high schooler, there's room for them on these boards, and there's a special talent bank for them, because these boards are very responsive to their ideas. And so there are also local school Bike Month events. So Arrowhead Elementary, John B. Day Elementary, or DIE, Great Neck Middle, Providence Elementary, Cook Elementary, Three Oaks. So if your student is a student at any of those schools, or just any of the public schools, keep an eye out for announcements. You may be hearing something about the Bike Month activity for your students. And the adults, too, can hop on the trail. Hush knows something about that. So if you've got any recommendations, let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary.
I just have a request of the city manager. Some of us still have a lot of concern about where we're going to be looking at putting our new LITA. We need, we need a LITA. And there's some different sites. Can we, in closed session, maybe on the 20th?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a briefing on that and discussion on the different sites that we're considering?
Yeah, I've heard that request from several members of council. So we'll work with Public Works Real Estate to bring the different properties before city council for consideration.
That's great. Cash?
This is very important. As you know, teachers, it's a part of my story, teachers are very instrumental in shaping the person that I am. A father, veteran of Vietnam War. If it wasn't for the wonderful teachers that helped raise me in the classroom, I wouldn't be the swell guy that I am now. So this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And so I'm asking, if you know a teacher, from May 5th to Friday, May 9th, this is where we show our appreciation. We dropped off a couple of things at the schools today. And so make sure to show our teachers that we appreciate them.
Thank you very much. Okay, and just closing out, recently, a group of us went down to the new Amazon facility that had, you know, and they put on a little demonstration and showed us around. It is amazing, if you ever get a chance to go to see it. And once the big building is built, from what I understand, there's going to be 4,000 robots. This is a magnitude project. But the one point I want to bring out, and you know, this is kudos day. The head, Lindsey Winter, made us opening remarks and complimented the management staff, Amanda Jared, Kathy Warren, and everybody about the ease of which they had in building this place, and, you know, doing things and getting going. So, you know, Mr. Manager, if you could comment on that. I'll tell you what, it was an amazing tour.
Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, it was a, is a very Herculean lift. It was a big project, probably one of the biggest projects Virginia Beach has ever participated in, you know. So just being able to bring that to the fruition and to the finish line is great news and something that we've all worked towards for several years now.
District Five.
Okay, thank you. How about council agenda review?
Sorry. So obviously, we have a few speakers on K1. Let's see. It's like eight so far. Does anybody have anything on any of the other items? Can we put them all on consent? And we'll pull K1, of course.
Okay. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: legal items, consultations with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to 2.2371188. And then publicly held property discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2371183. And that would be District Five, District Six. And then finally, public contract discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711829. And that would be 31st Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Reverend Lynch, is Ms. Fessbren coming?
Aye.
Ms. Fessbren Henley?
Aye.
Ms. Fessbren Housen?
Aye.
Ms. Reverend Green?
Aye.
Ms. Reverend Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Ms. Reverend Scholman?
Aye.
Ms. Fessbren Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are recessing to close.